Good evening, family. My name is Reverend Dan Tappin. A lot of you may have noticed I was down on ground zero and I didn't go to jail, but that's okay. Family, I'm gonna address this to you because I know you're not gonna answer. Number one, for the Citizen Review Board, would you like to have a Citizen Review Board where you have investigators and subpoenaing? Would you like that?
Yeah!
Would you like to have a Citizen Review Board where in any product or any incidents of misconduct or abusive power, where you are actually sitting at the table along with the DA, along with the police, that you have to sit at the table where you decide what indictment may be and the punishment? Would you like that?
Yeah!
Okay, would you like to have a committee whereby any policing that goes on in your community, you actually have to sit at the table where you sit down and you help and you have authority to make those decisions? Do you want that?
Yeah!
Okay, if you want that, it's called a binding agreement. I'll be in the back, you can see me, just for the community. I'm not a foreigner citizen, but I am your mother, I'm your sister, I'm your grandmother, I'm your aunt. And we have a solution where we have an actual active place at the table with power and authority to subpoena investigators just like they do.
Alright, hello, uh, City Council. I'm sure you guys are taking notes on your iPads or whatever, I'll just say to the media about what you're really doing. I also want to speak to the police officers outside. Um, I was, you know, shot and had smoke bombs thrown because the media was on the side street. So Ferguson, St. Louis County, whoever was in charge, um, decided that they were gonna attack citizens on the side street as well where there's no protesting. And when I looked to see on the newsletter, why was I shot? Why did I have a smoke bomb shot at me? I was told that there were helicopter cocktails, but they were about a mile back from the south, from the street that I was shot on. So I know you guys don't care about that. I know they say St. Louis County doesn't care how they shot in front of the St. Mark's Church uh, the first day that we were trying to treat people that had been tear gassed. They started blocking the entrance. Um, then the next day they came and they wanted to pull rifles on people. Then the third day, um, one of you guys, one of your building inspectors, gave them some trumps of abandoned school and you guys decided to raid and take things from there as well. So I know you guys don't care about any of that, but I'm gonna tell you where you do care. I know this is about money, I know you guys are scared. And I'm just gonna sue every last one of the officers. Because I'm not sure who shot me because you guys didn't wanna wear your badges. And a lot of times, when you would look at me, St. Louis County, I hope you guys can hear me out there. Um, Mayor Slay, if anybody else is here, I hope you can hear me. Um, you guys would wanna cover up where your badges used to be and knowledge that you know that we're trying to see who you are and that you're not wearing it, which is against Missouri Code of Law anyway. But don't worry, because when I went to subpoena and see who all was working at that time, West St. Louis, uh, or Ferguson-St. Louis City that was down there, um, this, uh, whatever, you guys, City Council, everybody, all the communication that was going on for that, um, all the lies, trying to get your story straight, I'm sure all that exists. Just know, I know you're really fighting hard for your paychecks and all that stuff, but your children, your children's children, all these police officers, I will just sue all of you until you are buried under attorney fees and we don't get these demands. Because that's what y'all really care about. That's what you really care about. You don't care about these demands, you don't care that my constitutional rights were violated at all. Um, you don't care that I lost faith in America. I just went last year to the inauguration in Washington DC and what happened to me on West Ford? And that church where you constitutionally violated me is completely gone. So just know that your paychecks, your kids, all of our shit left there, just dumbbelling. Yeah, I'm coming for all of your finances, everything, everything. I will still only sue for violating my social rights. So see this today, I am super, super persistent, I am very petty, and I know the law, so thank you.
My name is Yvette Towns Sanders. Through this, throughout this whole ordeal, I keep thinking about Dr. Martin Luther King. One of the things that I remember, a poster that I have that said, "It's not where you stand times of comfort and convenience, but where you stand at times of trials and tribulations." When I heard that Mike Brown had been shot and killed, it hurt me to my soul. That was since the day. I believe that God takes you through this for a reason. I myself, I'm not bipolar, I'm not an alcoholic, I'm not on any medications. I had St. Louis County turn my life upside down. I had them lie on me. I couldn't stay in my home because of fear of the police coming to kill me. The police report read that they encountered me and I told them that I was gonna kill someone. I would have been idiots if I'd done that then. But however, when I met her, when I encountered the police, when I didn't encounter the police, when I saw her, I wondered, was she on drugs? We've got to come together, we all need one another. I could care less about the color of their skin because you had nothing to do with it. But I do care about the content of your character. And if we don't stop the dirty hearts, if we don't stand up for good, we're gonna all suffer like we're suffering now. This is absolutely ridiculous. Something's got to be done. And the black kids, the black kids sometimes say, "You the white girl." But my white friends sometimes, they know I'm the black woman, okay? We all need one another, we got to work together. But what I haven't sensed, and I see this predominantly white board, I'm very the first woman, I've done a lot of different things for a lot of different people. But what I do see is this, you don't feel me. You don't feel me. When that young man died, I felt common sense, but what's the deal? A white police officer shot a black kid? Would it have been better if it's been a black police officer? You got to know the black police officer, then you got to know the white one. If you don't change the content of your heart, we're gonna all suffer and we're gonna all go down. Something's got to change. I went to my politician, I look everywhere, it's a shame that this child had to die. See, for the several dozen steps here, you've got to do something about this. You've got to change your heart. I think that there should be meaning, and I think that there should be change. And I think that you need to learn how somebody feels, I think we need to know how you feel. I think there needs to be transparency. I think that no police officer should go and do anything without cameras on him because you got a lot of... I'm wondering, I'm truly wondering, is there an underground blue plus plan? I'm truly wondering. It's got to change. I don't give a damn about your color. You had nobody that... I had nothing to do with what color I am. I had nothing to do with new people that deceive me. But I do have something to do with the content of my character. And there are a lot of character changes that need to be done. Some of these police officers are taking these jobs for the undertone. They're taking these jobs to use it.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna first say thank you to Greater Grace for opening up their facilities to us. This is the second time I've been here since Mike Michael was assassinated because that's exactly what it was, it was assassination. Um, and you all have been more than lovely at both times to my Caucasian counterparts on the stage. Um, I know you're not answering questions, but I just wanna comment that I am appalled. I am outraged and I am offended at the blatant disrespect in the guise of inaction, under the cloak of inaction. And your refusal to answer questions today is indicative of that disrespect. And, and the mere fact that your attitude, your, your behavior since this debacle has been indicative of the fact that you think that you just give us enough time and space to wear ourselves out. We'll talk, we'll part, we'll tear up where we say, and then we'll be quiet. We're not here to dance, we want answers. We want answers, and we're not asking for them, we're demanding them. And you may not have the answers today, it may take you lots of formulaic, but we will get answers to my African-American and my other Caucasian counterparts. We don't have to wait for them because we're not gonna hear what we need from them. It's gonna come from us. Mike Michael, my god's sister son, he is my nephew. And my sister said to me, "I don't care how long I live, they cannot make this make sense to me." They don't want it to make sense, it will never make sense. So rather than waiting on them and waiting on answers and waiting on apologies, let's not give them the power, let's be empowered. We have to rise up and we have to do it for ourselves. We have to make the changes. This is not my agenda, but I happen to go through a program called The Transformational Agenda this weekend. I don't know if anyone's heard of it, pick up a Black page just, I'm on Facebook, Patel Athens, I can get you a scholarship. I just happened to receive some information and went through it, and it was empowering, empowering. Everyone needs, everyone needs to go through this, everyone. Caucasian, African-American, everyone. We are power, we have power. We didn't come here with no power, we're not here with no power. We are the power. Stand up, let's get it, let's do what we have to do. Let's be empowered, people.
I just been standing there, I never stood up for anything, I'm so nervous and scared. I need to go to the hospital. Y'all back close, stood me up. Y'all let me sit, let me talk. I am so proud of y'all, but I am scared of police myself. I'm scared of it. I've been in Ferguson for 25 years. Police beat me home two, five years ago. They locked up my nephew, girl, they was outside of my house, somebody opened me up. And I said, "Put y'all to the lock, they're my phone," they said, "For you." I said, "Well, he's 16 years old." They said, "Oh, we're gonna lock him up to trust pay." So at that time, I just got mad, I had just had surgery. And so I just had to walk over my husband, this tall nigga, he said, "These police was going, 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 just walking on." Then next thing I know, I hear police, they lock her up. So I was running. I went in my house and I checked the door, I didn't know the police was gonna keep your door down. He can't keep the door down. Throw me on the floor, arrest me. The police cops say, "In court, what we gonna lock up for?" I don't know what we gonna lock up for, but we gonna lock her off for something. When they got finished with me, they gave me five charges for assault and all other kinds of stuff. I had to get a lawyer, I had to judge, he didn't want to hear nothing. But it's just crazy, and it's still wild to me five years from now, that what happened to me. And I wanna say thank y'all for standing up, I wouldn't have been here. For y'all, for y'all, for y'all, for y'all, for y'all, for y'all. The purpose of who needs to change, I got that been after 25 years. And I'm sure that having my kids out, I'm honestly peeping out, you know? But not on this thread of the police and everybody, it's crazy. So, then I...
We got, we got two announcements. Listen, we got two announcements, can we keep your attention? Please, I know this is on a, a timed schedule, but you can keep your attention, two announcements. Uh, a young man here coming over, uh, is gonna make one over. The other one is, and as, as Pastor already said, uh, we know we have a time limit. And it seems like ever since he made that announcement, people have been getting longer. If we can just consider the person who is behind us, that they have something just as important to say as we do, say what we want to say, and then move over to the next person, that will really help, alright?
We say God is good, um, we say God holds your strength, uh, capturing 13 at Canfield Park. And anybody who leave their license for the ID, I'm paying for you guys to go get the ID, I'm marketing. So you don't have to shoot if they say you have the ID. I'm gonna pay for you guys to come up here between 10 and 4 at Canfield Park on the 13th, this early. So anybody who leave their ID, come up there, and we'll get y'all registered, make sure we get them people out of office and put somebody in office that's gonna represent us, that's gonna do right by us. Because God is good and he created us for a reason. So don't be scared, God, when your warrior's here, God makes sure your warrior's here, so don't be scared. Just, just come up there and vote, you guys, just make sure y'all come up there, thank you.
Pastor, what are you gonna do with these flyers? Uh, please, alright, please see him for one of the flyers. Uh, uh, the family has a representative that wants to ask you questions in the council, real briefly.
Good evening. Uh, number one question that we have, and the only question, uh, that the family have is why haven't I, why haven't Officer Darren Wilson been arrested? He should be arrested based off of the information of all the witnesses that have come forward. Uh, that's enough to arrest him. And the grand jury job is to indict him based off of what he's been arrested for. We will wait for that answer right now. We'll wait for it.
As all of you should, as all of me, as all of you probably know by now, the St. Louis County Police Department is in control of this case. The first police department does not have any jurisdiction to make that arrest. So I cannot answer that question.
Listen, who's the, who's the... Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second, wait a second, let me ask this, Mr. Mayor. Have you made a recommendation or have you asked St. Louis County if they were to arrest Officer Wilson?
Sir, we have removed ourselves from this case in my honor. It is being held on the side of this case.
You have, I wanna make sure I hear you correctly, you say you have removed yourself, the city of Ferguson, from a Ferguson situation, alright?
It is, it is in the hands of the St. Louis County government, the St. Louis County...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, one more question, and they have one more question. The question is, while you have removed yourself from the investigation, uh, what is under your power is, is Officer Wilson still being paid?
Pastor Lewis, I will, I will ask that you respect this council meeting is your public... I will, I will ask that you please have your next customer, your next season...
Okay, Mr. Mayor, hold on, hold on, everybody, hold on. Everybody, we're gonna be respectful, we're still in the house of God. We're still in the house of God, but we're gonna be respectful. Some of these questions, some of these questions are being asked for the purpose of being on the record. Everybody please understand that. Some questions are being asked so that they can be on the record. Alright. Hold on just a second.
Hello?
Hold on, hold on, let's get some water, we can get... Pastor, hold your stage. Case, we were respectful when you were speaking, let these who are in line have their chance. We were respectful when you were speaking, please let these who are in line have their chance. Thank you all so much.
Okay, uh, I'll be brief. Um, first of all, um, a lot of information is available about Ferguson municipal votes, including people efforts on the Ferguson City website. I encourage people, if you're looking at changing, uh, the Ferguson politics or any ordinance, take a look at the website. It's there for you to read. The other thing is, we have lots of people who do wanna get involved in running for office, and I love the idea of the Civilian Review Board, Police Board, I heard Wildcat, Human Rights Board. I think it'd be great if you guys would announce how people can actually, um, participate in this, make it open so there's not this vibe of little boy-ness that people are seeing. Um, and I think it'd be great to have a full-time spokesman program. Have people that are going to be in City Hall, the job it is, is to take them places from the city, uh, from the people in the city. Because I think it'd be nice, you know, not to have like that one lady who talked to the secretary and nobody knew what she was talking about. Have somebody who, who does their job. And also save you from getting called all the, all around the clock into mayor or council. They have someone there who can listen. That's it.
My name is Charlotte Prue, I'm a Ferguson city resident. What I have to say is to you all, the communities, my brothers and sisters here in the tents, to this meeting this evening. Um, I'm gonna go back to the business that was discussed at the beginning of, the beginning of this meeting by City Council. It is, uh, ordinance 7063. And it pertains to Article 3, your Citizen Review Board, that they're offering you, well, my apologies, that they're giving you, um, section 3326, as it refers to the powers, duties, and responsibilities of the Citizen's Review Board. C says, "No member, nor shall the board have the power, nor shall they assert the power to exercise direct supervision over any member of the department. The board shall not assert or exercise, nor attempt to usurp or exercise, any of the powers of the chief of police or city manager, but shall meet with the director and advise him or her of any matter it believes requires immediate attention." So, with that being said, um, my statement to you guys is, do we want to accept what they're giving us? Or would we like to get exactly what we, one, can and two, deserve? My question to the panel of Ferguson's government is that any of those things that you offered up in the beginning, um, are any of those binding agreements?
Good evening, my name is Louise Snow. I'm a 74-year-old lady. I was born here in St. Louis, Missouri. Well, we could go to Forest Park, Halls, the Hall, yeah. You are gonna check down in St. Louis, it's not Ferguson, it's St. Louis. There is saying, oh, and this is a really right city. This is a very, really right city. I've been all over, got the Riverford, I've been all over St. Louis. You can go to Mississippi and the people there treat you much better than people here in St. Louis. Thank you.
Awesome. Good night, good stuff. How y'all doing? My name is Marcellus Buckley, AKA Marcellus McCollum. Um, I live, uh, 1208 Yorkville, Spanish Lake Desert. I'd like to ask you a question, and this is a simple question, is why aren't our kids safe? Can anyone of y'all ask me that question? Can y'all answer that question? Why aren't our kids safe? Now I'm gonna recite this to a poem. Why aren't our kids safe in this place that we call our home? Just know that things can and do go wrong, oh, please don't mistake it. Even though you get ride home from mom or dad on the bus, lives are at stake. And I hope you take the best route that day. Oh, I hope there's no terrorist explosion or bus take over or outbreak. That no one falls asleep behind the wheel, running kids over, taking lives at will, only if they were sober. And I hate to say I hate, but I hate how this feels. So why aren't... To my little brothers and sisters walking home every day. It's a struggle having strangers bucking, and I know you feel some type of way. Gangster thugs with no jobs, without their hands off their waist. Only training to rob so they got guns to your face. Oh, I hate to say I hate, but I hate how this feels. So why aren't our kids safe? To my little sisters beginning to become young women through the ages 9/11, end up sinning, and end up pregnant, making she find love in the beginning, but end up hating herself in the end. All because of some lustful even time, oh, I wish I could rewind the freeze time. Just change all the minds of these molested rape or her murder child quick while after feeling no guilt. Oh, I'm gonna give these pieces of dirt the damn time to feed poison to my beautiful flower in the sunrise. And I tell my son, "Set off to protect mine." And I know you feel the same. That's why I say I love you all, with this place, not at all, you ask me mine, I simply reply, because our kids are not safe. Thank you for listening.
I wanna ask two questions. First, to the women on the panel. How would you feel if you were Michael Brown's mother? And if your son had a dream? And he wanted to go play football, and he was walking home with playing with his friends in the neighborhood? He's a teenager now, put yourself in your mind, your child, your baby. Not you as a politician, as a representative, but as a human being. And he was murdered without shit, there's no serious crime, there's no felony. There's no, there's nothing that warrants him being murdered by a, a, a police officer who was supposed to serve and protect him. To the males, what do you tell the representatives or the people in charge? What do you tell these officers in terms of how they are to, to interact with the young youth in the community? If they wanna understand him, you heard him? If they express themselves, you kill them, you success the force? Is that what they're being taught? It doesn't take the rockets by anything to see. If he wasn't racist, because nobody knows that, and nobody knows he's a racist, but he abandoned protocol, he didn't handle the situation like an, an adult should handle a teenager with authority? That's, that's, that's what you ask yourself as a parent and a human being. Would you sit around and wait for lip service, for smokes and mirrors, no transparency? It's not hard to do what's right. And you all know we live in a system, under a system that's hypocrisy. It's built on hypocrisy. You're all educated that's sitting on that panel. So you can come feed the people BS, or you can take action on your own. You don't have to worry about what the person next to you is thinking. You know right from wrong. So you can sit on the side of justice and act like a hypocrite? Or you have an opportunity here to be a leader? To use your education? Because if you're really educated, you wouldn't have to go for it just to know that he was a young teenager in this community that was murdered by an officer. Do something, stop the lip servicing. Do something, that's what the people are saying. When you see these young black males, they may not have your articulation skill to tell you, they're tired of being repressed. They're tired of the systematic and the institutional racism. Yeah, you personally may not be racist, you may love people of other color, but you know your system is built on, it's built on oppression. And it's continually keeping young people repressed and in a system that doesn't love them. Thank you, sir. Don't thank me, do something.
I just wanna say something real quick. We already know this, the only reason why, why the reforms or the bills that were presented in the beginning were presented, were because of our protests. And I would say this, proposing, proposing new bills and reforms when you haven't been out there with the, with the youth, the people in Ferguson while they're getting gas, it's a little disingenuous. And I know that Mr. James, people, people, the media has asked, like, why aren't you out? And I think you said that's the mayor's job. Sorry, the board likes the mayor, and the mayor's the spokesperson. But it really hurts when the City Council is not out there with you. And I think we also, like, I think we also, you know, realize that, like, you know, the, a lot, a lot of the bills, reforms that you guys are gonna push, push forth are gonna be toothless, and they're only not gonna be toothless unless we put pressure on them. And as a little review board, my questions are, is it actually gonna have subpoena power? Will it have, will it be elected? My question.
Hi. I am Mass, Mothers Against Sisters Killing. I am a black woman. I am a woman of God. I have a 17-year-old that was killed. I am here standing for Leslie McFadden. I am here standing for all the mothers who had children that were killed. I am here standing for Mike Brown. I am here standing for justice. I will still protest for whoever wants to protest. I'm just here, and I'm standing for Mass, Mothers Against Sisters Killing. And we will be out Saturday on Natural Bridge at King Highway, standing for the mothers who have lost their children in every St. Louis city. We are just gonna stand, in Jesus' name. We are gonna stand to help all the mothers to know that we can come together, and we are here to support them. It doesn't matter for anyone's sake. We are here to support each and every mother that are here who had their children die. And I am a mother who lost a son. And yes, he had a four-year scholarship in Iowa State. Yes, he came here to visit me, and yes, he did get killed. Just like, as someone asking him, why did the school that he was here, asking him for a flying home? And this person got to it with some gang members. But yes, he did. He preached his first sermon. Yes, he did. And he was a man of God. And although he was 17, I am his voice, I am Mike Brown's voice, I am Leslie McFadden's voice, and I am Mass, Mothers Against Sisters Killing. And whoever wants to stand with me, you can. Thank you.
Mayor Knowles and members of the Ferguson City Council. My name is Erica Hobbie, and I am a third-year law school student and senior legal intern for the litigation clinic at St. Louis University School of Law. I am here tonight because we represent hundreds of clients in municipalities just like Ferguson, as well as citizens here before the municipal court in Ferguson. Recently, we drafted a letter to Mayor Knowles in response to the tragic death of Michael Brown and the unrest in the Ferguson community. Our purpose for that letter was to help bring healing to this community and to facilitate a relationship of trust and confidence between the citizens and the local government. Tonight, we applaud the efforts by the Ferguson City Council for proposing those much-needed changes yesterday, and this is certainly a step in the right direction. However, though we do believe in the strength of your structural changes, they look to the future, but we first must heal the wrongs of the past. The proposed warrant recall program intended to go from September 15th through October 15th is not enough. We ask the City Council to provide total amnesty for anyone without standing fines and warrants for nonviolent offenses. We do not believe that your current proposal, which calls for some defendants to still post on, allows for that fresh start that your community needs. With a fresh start, residents of Ferguson will be more likely to participate in your government, your community, and actually believe that real steps have been taken. Now, you have taken that first step by changing the court for the future, but by granting total amnesty, that would heal the wrongs of the past and to deliver on your promise to improve trust within this community. Thank you.
My name is Brittany Farrell, and one of my many concerns involves the mental health of the people in Ferguson. As a healthcare professional, it baffles me that you all are working so hard to protect the livelihood of a racist killer cop, that after shooting and gassing the people of your community, you all did not have the decency to address critical mental health needs. The mental health needs of the residents that you have inflicted damage upon, postpartum stress disorder, acute stress disorder, and anxiety disorder do exist, and the people who are the same demographic of those that you have violated are the ones that suffer most. This past weekend, Ferguson Police Department set up a handbill to fingerprint Black children for safety for all. Those Black children are children of families that have been treated like second-class citizens for the past several weeks. Yet, you are a community, you do not care about those children you are fingerprinting. You do not care about the pockets of the people whom you are milking from, and I want you all to know that you be held to the highest degree of what you deserve. Now, I would ask that Ferguson be held responsible for the medical expenses of those that have been missing work and those that have been seeing physicians for any type of anxiety disorder. So, while you're taking notes, please make note of that.
Listen, uh, yeah, I wanna say this, it's approximately 9:35, and we still got some pretty long lines, so if you can, uh, please make your comments as brief as possible.
Hello, good evening, everybody. My name is Kimberly Garner, I'm today representative of the 77th district. And why I came here is not as a representative, but as a practicing lawyer who has to deal with the municipalities that we speak of today. One of the issues that I have as a practicing attorney, and as a black African-American attorney, is the treatment that professional attorneys have in Ferguson and these other municipalities. As you heard the previous law student, we need municipal court change, not just here, but all these municipalities. Because justice is not just about us. Justice is about representing the community, having special prosecutors within these municipalities who is fair for all people, all working people. Because the warrant right now, this warrant recall is just a pound of that, but it just hardens me that it took a young man to die for us to say, justice in these courts are not fair. And so, I thank the community, I thank the elected leaders who have been on the forefront, marching, I thank the youth, but we have to make change, and this is just the beginning. But what I'm saying, we need adequate representation. We need to have African-American judges that decide the municipal courts. We need to have prosecutors that can represent us. They're not told by the mayor to get this certified, because we need this amount of money for this municipality. We need fair representation, and it's, it goes to you guys. Because as you see, when we don't become a part of the system, we're left out of the system. And so, I'm saying, not just, uh, we need to join together, all people. It's not a black issue, it's not a white issue, it's the state of Missouri, the city of St. Louis, Ferguson, Missouri, it's people in these communities that are preyed on by wrongful stops, by high nuisance fees, by high grass, fairer, secure loads, faces, huge broken windows, by all these different things that they use to target you, to push you out of your homes, to push you out of your jobs, and to say, you're, you shouldn't, you know, you didn't have no representation. But we need to also look at the African-American bar and have him be a part of the policy that you put forward, not just to wait for failure to appear, because I have clients that have been locked up nine times over years, post-hub, and guess what? They still can't get their charges amended, they still can't pay, and a, and a payment claim is good, but what about people who have, who have to make decisions between whether to feed their family or to go to court? That's a shame. So, I'm asking you to please be a part of this, make sure you speak to your representatives, but also go to these meetings, not just today, not when the cameras are on, but every time that your voice be heard. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Travis Sapp, I'm part of the law forces. And today, there will be change, before I leave. Today, it starts today. And I have a couple of questions for you guys. How will these questions be answered? In the next meeting? Email? Maybe all hopeful? But, uh, is there an American dream? Is there an actual American kingdom that we can live on? Because obviously, I don't have my freedom. And that's one thing I would demand Thursday at 9 o'clock. No. And, uh, all I can say is, we deserve benefits. We deserve so much more. All of us, I've been working ever since I was six to be prepared for this. Ever since I was 16 years old, my grandpa telling me how hard he worked when he was working on the floor. To see that my grandparents worked so hard for nothing to change, that's fucking bullshit.
Yo, this church, this church, this church. Next speaker. Yeah, yo, yo. Man, I, I feel, I feel, brother. I wanted to say something, and I, I really, it, it's tripping me out, because I see a panel, a whole bunch of people that probably never talked or spoke to or shook a hand or looked at any one of these people in their eyes and had a conversation. You know, like, I, I especially, you know, I even see the spider on the carpet up there, I see you, brother. You know? Like, it, it's, it's hard. Like, for real. You know? I, I, what, I bet all of you all don't even stay within 20, 30 minutes of the city limit? So, what are y'all trying to do to, with, with people that y'all don't even understand or know how they live? Are y'all trying to make a bunch of decisions for, for people that you want to, to live a certain way, or you trying to have them live so it'll be a better community? You know, I, I, I see, it seems like you all try to look concerned or, or play a part, because it, it looks like a good job to sit up there and not say nothing and get paid. You know? For real. Because, I mean, but, I, I know people who slay, who go into alleys and straight just to hit cans, just so they can feed their fam. And y'all sitting up there looking, looking mighty, like a tortoise. You know? But, but, have you all done any type of community work outside, talking to people? Like, trying to even get to know the people that y'all condemn? Also, that let me know y'all don't care about us, so I'm just, I'm just gonna let you know how it is. If you ain't from the streets, you gonna get done, and have a street to do.
Hey, what's up, y'all? My name is Lenore, and, uh, I'm gonna be there for all the law forces. We apologize for that, he's a little younger, he got a little emotional, we apologize. But that ain't gonna change what we trying to do. It ain't gonna use, there's no diversity. So, he cursed to get him out of there, okay, his fault, we sorry. But check this out, my son, only 13 years old, and the first day that these protests started, my son was crying, saying he wanna go home. I'm like, what's up? He said, we gonna get shot. I said, shot by who? He said, the police. I didn't teach him, man, that's what he thought, man. And another thing, I was in y'all jail, having a seizure, when your people put a spit bag on my face. When I came up out of seizure, I had a spit bag. And when the next shift came on, the next shift sent me to the hospital. I called a lawyer to ask, what shall I do about it? They told me to go file a complaint, with a court, a warrant, to my junk, because they sent me to the hospital. So, I went up to the file of the complaint, y'all locked me up again. So, we hurt folk today, and tomorrow, and the next day, and the next day, and so we get dressed up, and so you gone, we'll see you early at night. Yo, chief, we want the chief gone. We been sleeping out here, we ain't been sleeping out here because we homeless. We ain't been sleeping outside because we wanna kick it. We sleeping outside because we letting you know, we ain't going nowhere. Yo, can you, can you reset my time? You gonna, who, who's, who's in charge of the time? I wanna... Alright, my bad. For people, for people to act like this issue is not black and white, it's insane. That's, that's, that's an insult to me as a human being, you wanna tell you that this is not a black and white issue. We've been dealing with these systemic issues for centuries now. Not, not decades, not single years, it's a century, hundreds and hundreds of years. We've been dealing with these systemic issues in America, right here on this soil. And, uh, I'm just gonna go through a little history. East St. Louis is, that's all close to us. In the early 1900s, post, uh, post-slavery, that's where the, uh, uh, a large number of, a large percentage of the black wealth was in East St. Louis, Missouri. And it was also a toll so of the home. And, and the white community in Poli's went and destroyed it. And then, uh, they wanna, they wanna know why the, the, they, they act foolish as to how we got this, this wealth, yeah, and now that we see in 2014. And that's just one incident, you know what I'm saying, where like, the whole city has been destroyed, and you can go drive and see it right now, and you would think just from driving by that it had to be some crazy thing that happened here, you know what I'm saying? And it was. And it needs to be acknowledged, these things need to be talked about, these systems that we're fighting against, this is white supremacy at this table right here. This is white supremacy, we're facing. This white supremacy right here means cops out here. They trying to use the intimidation factor even now. You know what I'm saying? It's crazy. These people over here acting like they really care about anything that's going on with us, because they have the privilege to not, to separate themselves from everything that is our reality. Financially, uh, just everywhere. Who does, so when a, 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 a white president or a white parent tells their kid that a specific race acts this way, and this way, and this way, all these things is the media and the, the portrayal that they give us, and it gets solidified in their brain, and then this race system gets, continue on, continue on, and continue on, because people, people on want to say is, is this isn't a black and white issue. Let's be real, if this is a black and white issue, let's have the big conversation, like you had with the Jews, like you had with the Arabis, who yesterday didn't go through oppressive things, but not to say one is worse than the other, but man, do this thing. Do this thing, for real. You saying that this is not a black and white issue, it's hurting me way more than him? Because once you wake up and acknowledge that, we grow. And it's not like a, I don't, I don't issue. This, this issue, that, 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 they were, they were birthed from your forefathers. And the reason why it's solidified now is because we don't wanna have a conversation. So, let's have the conversation. We can bypass all this shit. We don't gotta, we don't even gotta talk to these people. We can, we can, we can elevate our status, but first we need to have this conversation. So, my thing is for everybody in here, black and white, wants to say that this isn't a black and white issue, reevaluate history, and reevaluate what we're gonna be right now, and, and see if you think the same way. Excuse me. Thank you for everybody's comment, but please watch your language. This is still a church. Amen. Thank you.
I'm Mike Brown from Ground Zero. Thirty, thirty, thirty-one days since Mike Brown was murdered and laid in the street for four and a half hours and no justice yet. Anybody in the world listening to y'all's stories tonight, the story of humiliation, brutality, mothers being arrested and degraded while their infant children in the backseat, children being terrorized, kids being tear gassed with a rubber bullet, again, and again, and again. This, it would be outrageous for anyone to have heard this, and this is just the front end of a whole program of criminalization and massive incarceration going on throughout this country. They talk about, this is how the pipeline for the interstate... They talk about, "This is how the pipeline for the interstate and the prison be at bill" to this kind of criminalization of the youth. Yes, the only reason there's talk of reforms is because these youth that the authorities love to demonize and degrade stood up with great personal responsibility, courage, and brought this in mind, and sent a message to the whole country to wake up and stand up against this emergency epidemic of police brutality. And that's where justice is gonna come from. Building and continuing this kind of struggle that's been going on, nothing less than that. That, what people have done here has been heroic and it's been a game changer. It's gotta go forward, including into the October month of resistance against police brutality, mass incarceration, and the criminalization of a generation caused by Dr. Cornell West and Carl Dicks, who was arrested here last week in St. Louis. So vote to stopmassincarceration.net. And finally, indict and arrest the killer cop. That's the only justice. We know that there is no justice.
Uh, I just want to give respect to the pastor. Thank you for letting you, uh, let you use your church tonight. But, uh, I just want to say to y'all, and I'm just leaving. How did you feel when you seen that man landed the street? Because on me, as a young Black man, I can only speak for me, son. I can only speak for me. I'm scared. I'm 265 pounds. I ain't never lost a fight. But to know that somebody who's supposed to be protecting and serving me can kill me, and I'm supposed to be doing something my life, I'm afraid. What are you supposed to do about that? It's your city. I don't care if it is the police chief or whatever who's supposed to lock him up or do all these whatever's. It's your city. What are you supposed to do about it? You got us out here, you won't even answer the questions. You ain't gotta answer everybody's questions, but answer some of them. That's all I gotta say, man. Think about your positions. I gotta go home.
Hey, everybody. First off, I want to start off by giving my heartfelt sympathy to... Um, my name is Melody Mary Williams, and I come from a small-town campus in the city of Missouri. And I proudly and willingly travel miles to come and stand with the people of Ferguson. And I do it all over again. Um, after researching the corruption that has went on, um, within this particular city, and seeing the images within my home of tear gas and, you know, police officers wearing the military gear, and seeing young Mike Brown laying on that ground like that, and just seeing the lack of empathy and compassion by the people on council, the only thing that runs through my mind is, how in the world can you treat these people like this? How, how can you do that? I mean, I don't, I mean, it's just incredibly mind-blowing to me, and I'm, I'm, I'm just tired of it. I don't understand how a man can senselessly kill an 18-year-old. I'm 31 years old. I'm sick and tired of seeing these young kids being senselessly shot and killed. But I just want to tell everyone here, because I, I have friends and family in this community. I know that someone has let you down, but know that you have a friend in Crystal City that is praying for you, that is supporting you, and loves you to the fullest. And I'll be here to stand with you and do everything that I can to see that justice is served in this community. I love you all, and God bless you.
Hello. Hi. Um, I'm Mike Brown. I'm the human race. Hi. I'm every color that these people have discriminated against and illegally brutalized. I don't have a question, because obviously that's invalid. Uh, I have a statement, but I only have two minutes. I'll start with the little note card. You said me. The three lines that says that, "Oh, we really care about how you feel." In three lines, I'm supposed to sum up all of the wrongs that you all have committed. Uh, not enough paper, so add that, write that down, really make a sense of that. I have three minutes to try to tell you how ashamed I am of every single one of you. Shame. This is me shaming you, all of you. How dare you? These are people, we are human race. You stifle our people. Eighty percent of the Black community are locked up in jail. A statement for that, maybe? You have nothing to say? Alright. Um, how about you write down equality? Just put that down. Okay, thank you.
My name's Garrett, and I'll be quick to meet, uh, No Angel. But during this ordeal, it seems to me that this is indicative of a lot, big problem in justice. You know, people are tired of being locked up time and time again. Different municipalities, they pass around, they know where the good, they know where the good jails are after being locked up some time. They know that they're gonna be pulling the orange jumps from the floors over a one-stop center. They know that they gotta drive around Riverview instead of going down 27th. You know, it's gonna take a long time because the gas law force is closed. You know, they tired of this kind of stuff. And you know, I mean, I mean, my thing is, my question is, are you all really willing to sacrifice not just the city of Ferguson, but the entire metropolitan area of my killer cop? Are you really willing to do that? This stuff, this part has gone on in Ferguson, a place where people with their tags right on their car, which I swear to God is defeating St. Louis. Now, your car registered, no warrants, it's difficult to see. That's where I'm at, my street, the infants in St. Louis live in Illinois. When the corruption moves through a tax, okay, it's difficult. They do this kind of stuff, they're a little bit hard on their quittrick in 15 to 20 minutes. So you want to repeat it all over the area? I mean, are you really that crazy?
Hi, my name is Adrian Hawkins. I'm a 27-year resident of Ferguson. I want to know why I, in the hot zone, was locked in my house when I was at home at Curfew. No, I'm not a night warrior. I was not out there fighting, but I thank the brothers and sisters who worked. I want to thank the clergy for standing up for those people and protecting them. I would come outside of my house in the daytime. I came out seven days later to go to the quittrick because I wanted to pray for this situation. I saw you, Mayor Knowles, but you would rather be filmed picking up trash than to pray for your community. I'm here to ask you, where are you on that side of Ferguson? I see you with the Iowa Ferguson shirts and signs, but some other man came to my house, knocked on my door, and asked me to join the Iowa Ferguson group. It was not you. This is your city. It has to be you. If it's not you, then it needs to be someone else. I have some other questions, and I'm gonna try to stay within my three minutes. But how are you going to select the new citizens for you to work? Because the one you have evidently isn't doing anything. I need to also know that most people were there and they were complaining about the Ferguson, Ferguson Children's School District children not being able to go to school. The line stopped at my house on Fargo. Those kids go to Riverview, they already in school. If you want to have one Ferguson, why are you sending Ferguson residents to an uncredited district? You need to address some serious problems in this community that happened way before my time. I also need to know, why is the chief still employed? His mismanagement? Who allowed him to continue to speak to the media? Who allowed him to continue to, now we find out, lie to the media? Shut him down. He should not be able to talk. In fact, he should not be able to receive another paycheck. I also come bringing some solutions. People need to dine out, not only in Ferguson, but in those businesses that were affected by this situation. If you want to invite somebody out, invite them down to West Floris. We've got Reds. We've got all kinds of restaurants that need to be handled. These people need some help and not a loan from a government. Invite people to come back to your city. I need to see you picking up trash before you make some more trash. And I have pictures of the things that they shot at us, even though I was in my house where I was supposed to be, but they were in my yard over a block away. You need to explain that and provide some counseling for me because a helicopter flew over my head for 10 hours a day. Where are you in? Sexy, handsome, kiss the babies in West Floris.
Last one. I'm sorry, you all. That's the last one. Uh, it's 10 o'clock. The house is set shut down at 10. I'm, I'm in. There's a $4 million, there's a $4 million debt that Ferguson has to pay. That $4 million said the taxpayers are gonna be paying that. Why is that? There's another issue. Why is this side of Ferguson the better than the other side of Ferguson? Why would we make this Ferguson the new Ferguson, since that's the old Ferguson? If I could say this to him right now. Okay. It's 10 o'clock, everybody. This is something, this is something, this is something that I'd love to say. Okay, I've been great, great. We open our doors, so we all could come here and speak tonight. And I must say one thing. I've heard a lot of things tonight that really touched my heart too. And I want to say this to all of us in the city of Ferguson. I want to say, I want to say that one thing that need to take place. Let me, let me finish talking. Let me finish talking. The one thing I want to say, let me finish talking. Thank you so much. The one thing that I want to say to the City Council. Let me, let me finish talking, guys. To the City Council, you didn't answer any questions tonight. You heard a lot of things to be said. And let's be honest, it's time for change. Things must change, and it must change now. Because we cannot have, we cannot have a city that remains in pain. Because if we ignore it, I'll say this once and let me done with it. With my own children, if my children keep asking me a question, and if I don't answer the question, after a while they become angry. It's time that it could change. Everybody, and God bless you all, and I pray you have a good night. And let us all work together as one city, City of Ferguson. God bless you all.